What's up everybody, it's Kimmy Coco, your host of Connecting the Dots Podcast. Me, Dom and Jay Black would like to welcome Councilman Antonio Lewis.
Let's go, let's go.
There have been so many elections going on locally here in Atlanta recently and we just want to congratulate you first of all.
I appreciate you.
That was a good, 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 good race and that was a neighborhood that everybody was kind of paying attention to as well as the mayor, the mayoral race. So along with the new mayor, I think there's six new city council or nine?
Man, I ain't keeping count today.
I think it's like six or nine new city council members. So Atlanta, we have a new page, we're turning a new page. We have new leadership and we talk about this on the show all the time, vote, hold people accountable and get involved. And this is a perfect example, a perfect example of somebody that got involved. A young man, very passionate, very active in the community, won his election. So this is something that needs to be applauded y'all. Again, just pause, congratulate this man for a race well-run. The person that he ran against was in, was in her position for?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. So that means when she got elected the first time, y'all were still in high school.
She actually got elected when I was a junior at Southland High School.
So, look, it's a new day and the message is being felt and heard across Atlanta, it's a new day. So, we're not only gonna hold the elected officials accountable, we're gonna be accountable ourselves. Because we don't want to make them look like, you know, we voted for them and they got in there and they're not doing what they're supposed to do. So, we're gonna talk to him about what his agenda is, what he sees for the vision, the future of his district and for the entire city of Atlanta. We're gonna address a couple of issues that have been going on and we're gonna have a good time.
Oh yeah.
Cause you know how we do over here.
Let's go, we're gonna be, we're gonna loosen it up a little bit.
So, District 12, what area does that, tell me where the borders are.
It's the south side of Atlanta. We go as far down as the airport. The airport is a part of District 12. So, we are fully a part of what the largest job hire, not only in the city of Atlanta, but in the south. So the airport, you also have Tyler Perry Studios and Fort Matt Ferguson, the entire thing. We have Cleveland Avenue, Metropolitan, Deal Avenue, Sylvan Avenue, you know, Triton Yard is it, all, all that spaces.
The amphitheater?
Lakewood Amphitheater, you got a Polar Rock, that's, you got a Polar Rock, you got, you, you got Jonesboro Road. Yeah, it's a Calmington Road, we got some Calmington Road. So we are, we're, we stretch, we stretch. We are the, the southernmost you can go in the city of Atlanta. Then we got southwest a little, so.
Nice, 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 nice. So, what do you think the issues, what is, what do you see for the future? What are the issues that you want to address first when you start?
I think we already started with jobs, man. Social mobility, we, we live in a city of Atlanta where we used to be a king of social mobility, a beacon of social mobility. I'mma, I'mma start, where y'all from? Where you from?
I'm from New Jersey.
Okay, you from Jersey, where you from?
I'm from Mississippi.
All right, what brought y'all to Atlanta?
Jobs.
My family is from here, so.
What brought you back?
I feel like this is home for me. Like it's not, I wasn't born here and I wasn't raised here, but I was always brought here because everything is here.
Opportunity.
Yeah.
Beacon of, all right, so guess what? What if I tell you that the place that you call Atlanta Milk and Honey, beacon of social mobility to y'all and say, come here, you can win in Atlanta. It made Tyler Perry go to Hollywood and say, you ain't gonna let me sit at your table, I build my own, right there in Atlanta, right? And that's what he said. So, but what if I tell you that that same place, 29% of the black people are below the poverty line? And then, if you born at below the poverty line, so we talking about kids born at Grady Hospital like me, right, Grady babies, right? From this, from these soils, this red clay, from here, right? You got a 4% chance of making it out. When you say 4% chance, that, that, you talking percentages to people. People don't want to hear you talk percentages, right? So I say, you got four out of a hundred. So you gonna go one, two, three, four, then you gotta count 96 more people before you get to one more person who gonna make it out of that struggle. Everybody else gonna die in that struggle. So what y'all seeing, what y'all came to, it don't exist for people from here for real. You move here now, you, it don't even really exist for you no more. You get what I'm saying? So Atlanta won that, we were the city that states, that people came to for, you can win. You gonna get you in one generation, you can go from being poor to middle-class guaranteed in Atlanta. That's what we sold. So the Atlanta brand still winning.
And I always say that, cause with me not being here, like you a Grady baby, like you from here, like you been here and ideally, like you know what I'm saying, things work out, you gonna be staying.
Yeah.
So for me, I came here in 2008 and that's one of the things I always say, and I think I said on this podcast before, like, I've been here since 2008 and I feel like things have just drastically changed even from that time period. So I can just imagine somebody that's been here.
Right.
It don't work for us no more. You gotta fix it.
And I see that from the outside and like, I came here and hop into a community activism because I believe in contributing wherever you are.
Right.
And, and that's one of the things that I always tell people and that's why I'm so glad that, you know, once again, congratulations on your win.
I appreciate you.
You know, for 17 years, like it was the same mindset, it was the same, and, and not there's anything wrong with that, but it's cool to see people get out and vote, bring in new blood.
Yes.
And, and, and somebody that's eager to, you know what I'm saying, come in and like, once again, I'm a Grady baby, like, nobody else care about Atlanta, I care about Atlanta because like I'm from here.
And all of us care about Atlanta. So I'm talking about social mobility, right? So I'm talking about, you came here for that resource because you want to see some social mobility. People, family came in because they wanted some social mobility. They say, look, black people can get a W in Atlanta, right? So I ran for office and my entire campaign was about bringing back social mobility, right? So, now that I'm elected as a councilman and elect, the first thing I did, you say, what am I gonna do? What is my campaign gonna be about? Jobs. First thing I've been doing, talking about jobs, you go on my page, I'm talking about, you want a job, hit me up, hit my, hit my 19-year-old campaign manager up. DM us, you want a job, we gonna get you employed. I remember my cousin, Rakina, I just posted her yesterday, right? She went to a, I'mma give you a real scenario, you say, what are you gonna do? What the first thing you gonna do? Marta tweeted me last week. Marta ain't never tweeted me. They said, city of Atlanta officials, we need some help hiring people. I say, man, I believe you, Marta, I'mma help you. You know what I'm saying? That's, I take that challenge on, man.
Yeah, they have commercials on TV looking for bus drivers and everything.
Guess what? They barely would get nine to 13 people per event.
What?
I send that tweet out. I start texting my, my folks, texting my homeboys, texting my homegirls, hand up grandma, hand up auntie. Tell them, hey, look, we got jobs, we got jobs, we got jobs, we got careers, we got careers.
Benefits.
And then we told people when the event was, guess how many people that had in this event? Seventy-five, that's the most people that had at any event. After we put out the word because, and I walked in there, my cousin was in there. You know, she, she was one of the last people that showed up. When she left about an hour later, I walked, I walked the hiring manager over to meet her in line and meet a couple, a couple more of my homeboys. One of my homeboys was there with a mouthful of slugs, cause it's real Atlanta now, and he want a job. He here for a job. He ain't never had a job, he was like here for a career. He said, man, Marta got benefits?
Yeah.
You know Marta's pension is at 112%? That's the best pension in the state of Georgia. We need that, we need that career, right?
And pension is a word you barely even.
You can't get that anymore.
I'm talking pensions, I'm talking about, I'm talking social mobility because I'm talking pensions, right? And so my cousin hit me up 30 minutes later, girl, she said, got the job, cuz, got the job, cuz. She said it just like that. But, we getting people jobs, we building social mobility, what my campaign was about.
That is so wonderful. That's what we like to hear, yeah. And also let us know and we'll post stuff and tag us, we'll post stuff.
We getting people employed. The next job, we gonna get them city of Atlanta jobs. You know people want them city jobs? One of my homeboy hit me up yesterday, he said, man, the moment you getting them city jobs, I need one of them. I need one, he said, I've been working at AutoZone for the past 10 years. I make $15 an hour. You know how much the city of Atlanta start off at? $15 an hour. If he would've been working that for 10 years, imagine where he would be.
Right.
He would be vested, almost vested in his pension, 10 years closer to being vested in a pension. You know what I'm saying? He would have opportunities to own property in the city of Atlanta if I'm elected. So that's why we running social mobility, that's a real thing.
How long have you been interested in politics and becoming a?
Entire life.
Really?
Entire life. I was the president of my elementary school, president of my middle school, president of my high school. When I went to college, what y'all think I was? President of my college. I graduated college and I went and worked on Capitol Hill. So you got something called, if you, if you watch the NBA, if you watch basketball, right? Some people make it to college, some people make it to the NBA, you gotta be special to get to the NBA, right? Capitol Hill is the NBA in politics.
Right.
So fresh out of college, guess where I went? Capitol Hill DC. Worked for Congressman Lacy Clay Jr., left that job when he worked for President Barack Obama. Know what I did in Atlanta? We signed up over 6,000 people on Obamacare. This is 2012. My campaign manager is about 19 now, 2012, he was about 12 years old. I signed up his grandma on Obamacare, he was sitting right there next to me. You get what I'm saying? That, we started building right then, I took him across the street, we played basketball. But that's a community organizer in that community. So I've been involved in it that long. I've always been involved in it. I currently work for the labor union in which I, for the past six years, in which I'm the communications coordinator for everything in the south, everything from Florida to Texas. You know what I'm saying? So, I, when you talking about labor, you talking politics in the south, my hands been touching it for the past six years.
Wow. So is, is it difficult? Do you have a lot of friends that are interested in these political conversations and that really understand what's going on?
God bless me, man. All my friends are, all my friends are. I'm married real well. I married really well and she's, sometimes, she's interested in some of this stuff. But you, you know, I majored in political science and the circles I've been able to put myself in when I travel. Cause you know, when I'm at home, I'm on Cleveland Avenue. But whenever I traveled, I was at, I was always on the ground working for a politician. So I was in circles to where we were growing. And I went to an HBCU, it's a lot of people like me. I ain't by myself, y'all, y'all, y'all just like me. You get what I'm saying? So, I ain't by myself.
You're a lot younger and I just, you know.
I ain't a lot younger. Don't, y'all keep doing me like that, man.
That means you gotta.
I'm 34 years old.
Well, I'm saying is like, you're 34.
Yeah, is what I'm saying. I tell them that all the time.
It don't crack.
She, she uses her age against us all the time, man.
I tell them that all the time.
It don't crack, it good, it don't crack. You know what I'm saying? I see you been moisturizing your skin, you been moisturizing your skin, right? Mom, mom taught us something.
Yeah, but you know, that's why I ask because you know, I just see the younger generation, you know, being less concerned and about the issues until it gets to a big, big thing like Rayshard Brooks. And when that happened, I saw people get like, real fired up, like, okay, what we about to do? And that happened in your district.
That's my homeboy, Lemac. I know the family, I know his big brother, I grew up with him. You know what I'm saying, Ramon, his big brother, we, I've been knowing him since I, we call each other sandbox friends. So if you a sandbox, you been know what I'm saying?
Right, that's all your most your cousin.
Nothing crazy. So that's his little brother, we calling him Lemac. Look, if we would've had more funding in pad, police alternative and the versions, that wouldn't have happened. You know what I'm saying? So, yeah, that definitely happened in my district. But here's a, here's another thing. We got the whole world yelling black lives matter. We have this, we have the most literate black society in the history of the planet.
Right.
Man, we shaking stuff up. My election should tell you that. When they say young people get involved, give them something to get involved with. Give them something to care about, give them a person that they think cares about them. They moving different, on, on the south side of Atlanta at least. We had the first, the first city council debate in the high school history put on by high school students. At Southland High School. Ain't no other high school in the city of Atlanta do that? You get what I'm saying? Ain't no. These kids put, and it was packed, all of them was there. They clapped for both sides, they asked real questions. I mean, like, they were clapping for my opponent sometimes. You know what I'm saying? And it was, it was a real thing, led by young people. So, yeah, we, we got the most literate black society in the history of the planet and long as we send these young people through the right walls, right? We've been, we had one generation where the gang sent them through a wall, they sent them through the wrong walls. We gotta send them through the right walls. We gotta tell them what's on the, you know, and we know what's on the other side of the wall, cause we can read, these folks can't hide it from us no more in a book, we done read it.
And that, and that's real because with you being, you're 34, you know what I'm saying? So, I feel like, it, it excites me to see people in your, when, I'm 36, so in our age range because we're the bridge.
Yeah, you're the bridge, absolutely.
Between the older people and the younger people and we understand both sides, whereas these two sides are, we speak completely different languages.
Ain't even talking to each other.
Yeah, and, and so I, I feel like, that's why it excites me to see people, you know what I'm saying, that are in there.
I had a tape player, man.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? We got, that don't even exist no more. So we the last generation that had that and then we walked into the nano era, then walked into, we saw the digital stuff come and they was tricking us saying, you don't need no dog, you got a nano.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Like, we used to walk, GMX, woman, dog, always had a dog. Now we got a nano, a pink nano. Ain't nothing crazy about it, but that was the first stage between the digital. If you really think about it, so.
Gaming too.
Yeah, but we grew up, we, we, we part of it.
And, and, and there's so many young people out here that aren't energetic about, you know what I'm saying, politics and the city, yeah.
You got to be crazy not to be involved in this, man. I want all of them involved.
And, and so it's, it's exciting to see, like, once again, young people be able to link with young people and show them like, yo, I'm not that much further ahead of you. Like, this is what's ahead, like to have a path because like, once again, most young people, it's not that they're not intelligent, it's not that they're not smart, it's not that they're bad people. Like, I always tell people, I hate when older people get old and forget that they were young at one point. And we just have to give kids direction, we have to give them options, you know what I'm saying?
Options, let them know what's out there.
Ain't nobody out here robbing people because they want to. Like, people want jobs if you provide adequate jobs, if you provide.
I don't know a man with a good job robbing nobody. I don't know a man with a career robbing nobody.
Exactly.
I ain't met a man with a career robbing, with a pension and with a 401K robbing nobody.
That owns property.
It's Christmas time, man. It's Christmas.
It's stick-up season, it's stick-up season.
Man, it's Christmas, man. It's getting rough out here and we got, we, we trying to employ people. We trying, somebody, I'mma tell you something, it's real, right? A week ago, I ain't supposed to talk about this, nah, this week, somebody kick, I got a community center in the hood. Ain't nobody never tried me. I can leave my door unlocked, you can leave whatever you want to, on Cleveland Avenue. I can pull up at the gas station, leave my car running, ain't nobody gonna touch my stuff. This one guy, like, two days ago tried to kick in my door, right? And one guy, my, I just dropped him off, I was late today because I dropped off one of my homeboys named Punk, who I'm taking care of. We finna put him in a rehab center right now that we elected. God, good, we can really take care of him now. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, he, he actually woke up like, get out of here, get out of here. The, the guy woke up like, you ain't robbing him. And you know what? The next day, the barber shop called me and they said, guess what? It's taken care of. He can't come, he ain't come back around here no more. And, and he apologized, the guy came back, apologized, man, they ain't do that, ain't do that, man, I apologize, man. You know what I'm saying? Cause we, we just different, people are hungry though. I understand he's a hungry man.
People are hungry, people are hungry.
He, for him to go through that esteem to get me, he shouldn't even be playing like that. People need something. We gotta give him a job, we gotta give him some real help.
So do you think that with the new city council and with the new mayor, y'all are gonna be able to get a lot of stuff done together for the entire city?
Man, we got a progressive city on the way now. I'm, I'm open to everything. I know, I know Dre and I gonna work real well together. We, we play basketball together.
Oh, good.
Dre, Dre popped up on me, this is how I know me and Dre gonna work well together. I DM him one time. I said, man, I don't know.
Wait, everybody might not know who Dre is, let's tell.
Oh, my fault. No, we got a male named Dre.
We not all on the city council, who is Dre? Tell us about who Dre is.
Mayor Andre Dick.
Thank you.
Man, we got, we are blessed. We blessed to have a man like him. We blessed. And I, I'd call him a mayor, Keisha Lansbottom was still a mayor at the time period. He, November 1st, 2020, he popped up on Cleveland Avenue in my office, right? And I say, look, let me show you these murals. We then walked down the street, he see all the murals. We then go over and play basketball for about 30 minutes, me, him, my campaign manager and about 15 other kids. And that's the kind of mayor we got. He wanted to see what was going on.
That's nice.
So, yeah, I'm, I know we gonna be able to work well together. You got council member Doug Shipman, the new president, man, I can't wait to work with him. I can't wait to work with him. He's a good man, everything I've heard about him are good things. And so I can't wait to work with him. Mary Norwood as well. People in my community love Mary Norwood. I don't know what people done said about Mary, I haven't met her officially.
Yeah.
But one of my OGs from Joyland, I got an OG from Joyland, he a big OG than most people OGs, right? Everybody call him OG. He say Mary Norwood has always supported him. So I'm coming in, I hope they can hear this, I come in like this, I don't know what they, what they say about me, but I come in like this. We ain't building no lines, we building circles. We finna have a city that's gonna work for all of us, cause I'm talking jobs. We talking put, we talking careers, I'm talking about, look, the man who tried to rob me, tried to rob me because he need something. For him to try me, he had to be crazy. I just told you, I can park at the most dangerous gas station in the city of Atlanta, ain't nobody gonna touch my stuff. They gonna chase you before you get down the street. This man had to be crazy to try me. We got to give him some real help. You get what I'm saying? So, yeah, it's a different world we living in, we gonna fix it though.
Yeah, I think that optimism is key.
You got to be this Atlanta.
Yeah, and anything can happen.
Baby, everybody work together. You know how New Yorkers, they say, man, New York rappers act like Atlanta rappers, we can win. That's, we all cool down here, we know, you can eat, you can eat, you can eat, we ain't hanging on you. We ain't hanging on nobody, man, all of us can eat. All of us, when we go out, we really show off on it, you know what I'm saying? You see little baby Young Tho, they pipe up on each other and they, this is the real culture, I was born in there, Young Tho. I used to drive him to his rap shows. Real tall, he used to freestyle rap in my car. He used to freestyle like acapella for hours. He's the best rapper I ever heard in my life. Acapella rap for hours. As I used to drive him to rap shows, he from Cleveland Avenue like me. His dad was my basketball coach. You know what I'm saying? My, my, my cousin, who I used to sleep head to feet with, is with little baby every day. So we living, we connected any kind of way, we just ain't had no city council people that have been connected to the streets the way I am.
That's what is needed, that bridge from the street, so that you can get some information out there.
It used to be that connection.
It's the culture, like, you know what I'm saying? That's why, once again, I'm so excited, like, you know, it, it was a lot, you know, back and forth between people during the election, it's an election.
Me, we were winning, we were winning, baby. We weren't doing nothing with some winning.
Yeah, do you think that the, the protests is what really fueled your campaign? Cause you were involved in so many ways.
Most of the people that came to the protest don't live in my community. Man, my community never went to a protest till we had a protest on Cleveland Avenue. Like, I knew one thing about, I travel a lot for the union, I am an organizer by trade, right? But I understand that people on Cleveland Avenue with felonies, with guns, on Metropolitan with felonies, with guns, with Jonesboro, didn't have a proper time to, to, to mourn Rayshard Brooks because we wasn't going to the CNN Center to protest. We ain't going to the police and the CNN Center, police ain't never killed nobody. It's the police on Cleveland Avenue and Metropolitan killing us. You get what I'm saying? So they protesting the wrong police. We had a protest on Cleveland Avenue and Metropolitan. It was, they brought the, they brought the tanks out for us, they know we ain't playing, they know we dead serious about this. It was peaceful, we ain't tearing down no buildings and that, we want y'all to stop playing with us. Want y'all to know, we ain't afraid of you. And then they put me in office. We had more people that voted in one precinct in the hood than were voting Buckhead on the election, on that runoff election.
What?
Come on, man, we showed, they came out to vote for a person, not to vote against a thing, they believe in these things, we gonna bring jobs and we gonna fix that.
So do you think in, in future campaigns, that's a good point. Do you think, because I think that Democrats are having a hard time motivating people right now.
Nah, not, nah, you gotta be, I'm telling you, people vote for people, not for parties, none of that stuff.
I think if they take what you just said, put somebody in there that people want.
Can't put nobody in there. You gotta come from it. You got the bubble up, you got the bubble up, you can't put nobody in front.
That's what I'm saying, like, you can't get the type of pool he got just showing up, like, at the last minute, like, they know this man on Cleveland Avenue, they know this man.
Right, and they know who he is and they know that he's gonna do what they need him to do.
I'ma do, they, we gonna bring back some resources.
That's out of political parties' power, like, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
But political parties need to support those type of people.
Exactly.
But that's what I'm saying.
They don't want to see me.
They not.
You gotta control them, they can't control me.
People are voting against stuff, they're not voting for people, like, on the federal.
I just told you, on this side, we voted for them.
They are. On the federal level, they weren't, but this is pulling up, right?
All politics are local, local politics control the world.
And that's what we preach, week after week, after week on this show. And so I'm so glad to hear somebody does not let us say that. Because like, of, of course, like, you know what I'm saying, we, the presidential elections and all that gets all the attention, but the stuff day to day, you know what I'm saying? You talking about jobs, you're talking about housing, like, you know what I'm saying, that's important.
So we all came out and voted for Joe Biden, we all, for President Biden. We all came out and voted for Senator Warnock, Senator Lawson. But if you think about that election time period, I was able to hire about, I was able to hire a lot of people in the community. We knocked 110,000 doors. We were able to get that funding in because they couldn't hire anybody. People didn't trust them even going to knock doors for them. They couldn't pay people to knock doors. I put together a group of young folks and I got rid of the obstacles. There were some obstacles to go, to getting these jobs that were $20 an hour. We had to get rid of those obstacles. I got rid of those obstacles and we were able to knock 110,000 doors for Senator Warnock, Senator Lawson and President Joe Biden. We know that's what's got it, got Fulton County through, knocking doors, having regular relationships, having people go into the hood, where they from. We ain't, we ain't bring nobody in from out of state. We went, I went into 445 Apartments on Cleveland Avenue, hired Rihanna from 445, he's from there. We then paid him to knock doors in that community, we then trained him on how to be a person for that. He brought his brother with him, brought his cousin with him. Now that's three people that we're able to pay. They didn't have a car. They needed access to, get, we took care of that for them. So, yeah, we can do it, but it gotta be on a local level, we gotta invest in it fully, fully. When, when, when Stacey Abrams get ready to run for governor. Man, you see the numbers we just brought out? You just said the Democrats are having problems, man, come talk to me. I ain't tripping. Come on, talk to me, we gonna hire some folks and we gonna make sure that we bring the, we gonna bring them out, we gonna bring them out.
Please bring them out.
But come talk to me, we need to employ some folk, I wanna hire you some, some folks from my community.
Come talk, you gotta come talk to them, like, you know what I'm saying?
We can, we can brain the people out, we support, man, we gonna do everything we can to keep Senator Warnock knocking off. We gonna do everything we can to help Stacey Abrams get elected.
Yes.
We gonna do everything we can, right, to keep moving Georgia, Georgia forward as a progressive state, right? Come talk to us though, man. We wanna know y'all, wanna know y'all in the hood too. Come over here, I got a whole area, I'm a city council person now and they sent me there. They sent me there to say this stuff. I ain't, I'm speaking for people that sent me to say the things I'm saying.
And, and that's what, like, once again, just stating facts, when you look at literally how the votes were split, like, you know what I'm saying? And you see where people campaigned and where they didn't. Like, once again, I ain't calling no names, but like, you can go look, like, you know what I'm saying? And when you see this person won the whole south side and this other person, they ain't had no presence, they didn't think it was important to go campaign here and talk to these people. Those things make a difference, like, you know what I'm saying?
And, and we brought out a thousand new voters who never voted in when those were elections. So these people don't even, the mayor election, city council, they don't vote in that, they just vote for presidents. We were able to go and tell them like, hey, no, go vote for the person that you know gonna bring in some resources. And we want some resources, we want some jobs, we want things, we, we're jealous, we jealous, we see it.
Right.
We see what y'all got, we want it to be more fair. I believe that a rising tide lifts all boats.
Another issue that people is to have been talking about is affordable housing.
Oh yeah.
What do you think is gonna happen in the future with affordable housing in, in that area?
We have to start having partnerships with our federal, we have to start spending the dollars that come in, right?
So, that is another thing. With the fed, with the people that are there now, do you think that, how do you build a relationship with them? Do you see a block, like, say, with, with the governor that's there now?
A state. So I'm talking about federal partners, right? We gonna use our state and federal partners. So the, the governor there, he's a state partner, but we got two United States senators, Democratic senators who are working their butts off for us. I probably say, I probably shouldn't say those words, I guess, right? But they, they working real hard for us. If you just look at what's going on.
No, they absolutely are.
And we got, and we got a state rep, a United States Congressperson, Nekima Williams, who I've been on the phone with immediately after I got elected. We got my two state reps, my state rep, the, uh, state rep Schofield, I've been on the phone with immediately after I got elected.
Nice.
And we gonna build some partnerships to where we can bring in some real affordable housing, real affordable housing.
Right.
And we gonna bring some properties back online. And I'm talking about Lila Valley, I'm talking about, I'm talking about Lila Valley, I'm talking about Jonesboro South, I'm talking about Jonesboro North. I'm talking about bringing these properties back online. You know, most people, they don't talk about specific places, right? I'm pointing at the places. I know that 22, 2250 people can live in these three spaces. I know that, because we did it before. It's bringing this back online. And so, uh, we, we about to grow.
Good, good. So Lakewood Amphitheater is in your district, right?
Yep.
We need some shows, we need to get some, some hip-hop that is including politics and getting messages out, right, and like, you know.
Y'all know about the Birthday Bash? You know that used to be at Lakewood Amphitheater?
I did not know that.
Man, I used to walk. It used to be the most lit thing in the world. I don't know what happened to it, but the transition to power hasn't been as seamless as, as I would've liked. So I don't know as much about what's going on with Lakewood Amphitheater right now.
Talk about that, what is, what's the, the transition?
Transition is important, like, when it comes to you and.
Yeah, we seen that, like, on the federal level, right? When, when Joe Biden finally got in office and he was looking like, okay, what's going on with COVID? What's going on with this, what's going on with that? And he had no transition. So what's your transition been like?
Same thing. When you talking about Lakewood, I don't know, I don't know. Uh, we, I do know that we have a lot of projects that's going on in my community that are going on right now, like Reverend TD Jakes is on the way.
What?
He's on the way to my district.
What?
Wait, time out, time out, time out. Say that again for the people.
Well, they're working on a lot of different deals, I say that. But TD Jakes is a part of, a major part of one of the deals that could be coming to my district.
So you're gonna have Tyler Perry.
Same property on Fort Matt Ferguson.
And TD Jakes.
Two black, either, if not multi-hundred millionaires, billionaires who can help change what our community looks like, them by themselves could.
Right.
If the right conversations are happening. If the right conversations are happening, right? So Tyler Perry's been in my community for a long time, right? We have three high schools. Got Theroe High School, three APS High Schools, cause he sits in District 12. There are three APS High Schools that hit District 12. Theroe High School, Carver High School, Southland High School. He hasn't been to either of them. And I don't think that he's been asked to come. You get what I'm saying? That's the opposite, that, that's how I feel, I think we just gotta ask him. I think we just gotta say, hey, look, man, come, let them know they can be you. This is Atlanta, all the celebrities, all that, we want to meet you, want to know we can be you too. They know they can be me now, they now know that a young man from Cleveland Avenue can go down to 55 Trinity and be a city council person. It's been a long time, it ain't never happened. It ain't never happened, and none of us never been down there. So now we know we can put somebody down there, right? We want to know we can be Tyler, we need to know he exists, because in Atlanta, we done. We wanna know we can be Tyler, we need to know he exists, cuz in Atlanta, we done seen on Cleveland Avenue right now, it's a Lamborghini truck parked at the barber shop. So we know we can have that. The one thing, and a fo- four-year-old kid know he can achieve a Lamborghini truck. He need to see Tyler Perry so he know he can achieve that, cuz you in this community, and it's three high schools, it's three high schools. Need to see a TD Jakes, so we know we can achieve that, they gonna know they can be me. You get what I'm saying? They know they can be a rapper, cuz they see all the rappers. They know they can be that, we need to see him, man, that, that's, they, these the conversation that we gonna be having, I just think they having that asked. You know what I'm saying, these kids had a town hall at their school to debate at their school. You know what I'm saying, they went home and told their parents who they wanted them to vote for. These kids need to be able to meet these people so they know who they can be, so.
Now, you were saying, like, the kids, they wanna see, like, the Tyler Perrys and, you know, those type of people. Uh, would you create a job, looking to create jobs, are you looking to create jobs in those areas or just traditional jobs?
Oh, no, 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 definitely, we, Atlanta's changed, so the stuff we doing right now, what, y'all, y'all, y'all seen me look around the studio, right? Anytime I walk into the studio now, I just look around, man, this is beautiful, right? Our kids need to learn how to use this now, this is film, this is film industry. We have, we got the, the, the biggest black and the strongest people in the world right here, and then they said. He said it on TV, I'ma build my table in Atlanta cuz y'all won't let me eat it, y'all, well, my grandma created this space for you to build that table. She paid her taxes. She, black, black homeowners in Atlanta is why Atlanta is like this. Legacy homeowner, I'm a legacy homeowner, I'm a thirty-four-year-old legacy homeowner in Atlanta, how you gonna tell me I'm not? I own my granddaddy's house. When you heard T I say in that movie, it's my grandma's house. He wasn't talking about nothing else, he was talking about home, at that young age, he knew about homeownership, all us know this, our gr- our grandma and granddaddy bought these houses for us. They paid their taxes, which created a space, a safe space, to where you ain't gotta wait on Hollywood, man, more movies shot here now. And you in District Twelve, we just want you to invest in our schools, each one of those schools should, one of them should have a film school in it.
I think all three of them should.
And we'll take that, I bet these schools, man, they'll take that, they need it, we want it.
Financial literacy, all that.
Got the smartest kids in, smartest young black kids in the world live in Atlanta, teach them how to hold that film, uh, teach them how to hold that camera.
I was just listening to a show, I think it was yesterday, a podcast yesterday, and I don't know if y'all saw, but up by Atlantic Station, they built a basketball, Atlanta overtime.
Yeah, my homegirl's son plays on there.
But from my understanding, it's a whole, like, program, so it's basically school for basketball. Yeah, I think that's more important than, you know, per se, regular education.
I now believe in education fully, but I, I, I believe that we need that option, I, we need that option, I, I, I wore this shirt right here, man, I'm HBCU fully, I believe in. Everything education-wise, I believe in that there should be options.
It's about diversity in education and giving people the opportunity, just like I said, outside of non-traditional jobs.
It ain't just one way, cuz it, therefore, I asked you about the jobs, it's not just one, you don't have to work this nine-to-five, work for a company twenty years, especially nowadays. We see that in Atlanta. A job is a side hustle in Atlanta. You really doing your own thing.
But guess what, we need that hustle too, so you right, but then we got, you, I'm full out with you, you, you definitely decide, a job is a side hustle for a lot of people in Atlanta. Cuz we trying to build our wealth in another kind of way. You know what I'm saying, all us know we can be what we wanna be. You can't trick me, I know I can have it cuz I just seen young Thor came from nothing.
Like you said, you seen, they, the kids, they see the, the, what, the, the Rolls Royce truck.
You know what I'm saying, they, they see the mi- they see the miserities like they toys. They, imagine, when I was young, I was seventeen years old, I had my, my, because I was such a good student. A guy in my, in my community bought me a car with twenty-four inch rims. Real talk, I was in a Chevy on fold, so I knew I can have that at seventeen. You get what I'm saying, so it ain't no limit to what my mind could have been, then the mayor of Atlanta brought me into her job. She said, look, you could be the mayor of Atlanta one day, that's what Mayor Shirley Franklin said to me when I was eighteen. Then she let me follow her around for that entire summer to show me how the mayor actually moves. And so at that time, her and Kaseem Reed were best friends, he was the campaign manager. So I was able to see him before he became mayor, and see him in the subservient role to her, which is one of the, he was a hell of a campaign manager. That's part of the reason why I hired a nineteen-year-old campaign manager, I saw Mayor Franklin hire a younger person who was, had the dreams and ambition that Kaseem Reed had. Smart as all, get out. I ain't met a per- it ain't that many people, man, man, he, he done some stuff that's really smart, like for Howard University, for example, and. I know I'm saying the Kaseem Reed thing, but he's actually raising more money for Howard University than anybody in history university. Can you imagine that? He even gave a dollar, he created a program when he was a student. That was kinda genius that the man had, but that was kinda genius I was looking up to. You get what I'm saying? Maynor Jackson built this city, Sons of Atlanta, they built this city, so I've always been able to look up to that kinda genius.
I, I hear you talk about vision a lot, so I thi- you get it, you get what that powerful that is. Talk to us about, um, your HBCU program.
Oh yeah, 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 so I'm, I'm full out HBCUs proud, proud, I, I try to wear shirts. When I do interviews, say HBCUs, that with my HBCU on it, so you'll know that, how we coming. I believe HBCU changed our lives, I know it changed mine. And so I run a no- a nonprofit organization that's attached to it, I run a program in Atlanta that's attached to a nonprofit, cuz words matter, right? That's attached to a nonprofit, and what we do is, because I didn't have time to actually set up the nonprofit, I worked full-time, I didn't have time to set it up. So I attached it to my friend, what we do is we raise money for, uh, HBCU college tours, last year we went to six different states. Raising nineteen thousand dollars on my birthday, and then we went, we took twelve students from District Twelve to six different states. The, the tour, the drivers for the tour were, uh, former graduates of the high school of District Twelve, so they was able to experience it. I gave all these kids per diem, right? So these kids ain't never had a per diem, I put them in the, the best Hilton Hotel in all these cities, and I bought their food. So you know what I'm saying, cuz I, I, I ain't want their momma to have to give them a dollar because mom might not have a dollar. What I told these kids was to apply to the schools that we going to. I called the universities, and I told the university, I said, man, I'm bringing the best kids in the world up there. I need to meet your president, I need to meet your, uh, the, the director of admissions, I need to meet the dean of the agriculture department, I need all these folks, and I need a tour. And I wanna eat for free, you know what I'm saying, imagine, I just called them and said that, and I didn't do it, guess who did it? I made one of the students do it. I made this seventeen-year-old girl named Allison Hunter call all these schools, she a senior right now, I was preparing her for life. You know, I told her, call these schools, don't be nervous, call them and tell them we coming, tell them who we is, say these the smartest kids in Atlanta, they coming, she's get to rolling, you know what I'm saying? But she is, she's a three-point-nine student who shares a laptop, man, come on, you, you'll make them like what we got. And so every single one of my students went to college, uh, two of them that went on that tour, three of them that went on that tour, went to my alma mater, which is in Missouri, Link University in Missouri. And they got full ride scholarships. And we were able to, my, my kid, the students that we had, they, they all went to HBCUs itself too. But the two that didn't go to HBCUs got full ride scholarships, you get what I'm saying, so social mobility is key. Full out stunt support of HBCUs, we growing.
That is so wonderful, that is so, I like, I'm speechless, I don't even know what to say.
Man, we working, we.
It's just like, you have all the bases covered.
Me, they asked me what gang was out here. Imagine that. Imagine that, everything I just told you about in my life, now say, man, but what gang are you in?
Who said that?
I know.
Somebody asked you that?
Man, they asked me that so many times, it was crazy on the campaign trip, cuz they can't see a black man married to an attorney who went to three HBCUs. This straightforward, they, they can't believe that.
And, and this is why I'm so, you gotta let them see it, you gotta.
I ain't cut my beard, I'm not gonna cut my mane, my wife won't look at, she, she gonna say I look like a little boy if I cut my mane, so. And I can't change the way I talk because my friends gonna say I'm talking fake. So, we gonna read all the books, you gonna understand that a young man from Atlanta can be T I, he could be a king in any kind of way, right? He could be T I King, he could be Doctor King King, both of them grew up, both of them gravy babies from Atlanta. You know what I'm saying? So you can be all things in Atlanta, and T I King is a hell of a king. T I King is a hell of a king.
He's building, he's contributed a lot to the community. A lot, um, he built a whole community of affordable housing, is that in your district?
We love it, imagine how much people love their hood, they tattoo it on, we finna invest in these hoods, man, in our communities. We ain't up, we call them hoods cuz they short for neighborhood. That's our neighborhoods. These are our neighborhoods that we love so much that we tattoo on us, then they kicking us out of them. Imagine getting kicked out of a community that you got Cleveland Avenue tattooed on, you can't afford to live on Cleveland Avenue your whole life. You love Cleveland Avenue, my brother, you love it, I got to get you back on Cleveland, we got to work this out. We got to work this out, so that, that's the city that we live in, but it's cuz they stopped caring about people, they stopped caring about the people. And we just gonna start, we got at least one city council person who care about the people, so I'ma learn the city council job, cuz my transfer of power hasn't been as. Easy, right, I'ma learn the job as we grow. But we gonna, we gonna care about people with every vote.
You officially starting January?
January third inauguration, y'all need to pull up.
Oh yeah, I'ma come.
Hey, and New Year's, I'm having an event at Area Four. Ain't, ain't gonna be more lit than that, y'all been to Area Four before?
I haven't.
It's right by Green Bra Mall, right by Green Bra Mall, you can't miss it, it's beautiful, next level beautiful. Next level beautiful, you pull up, it's gonna be a real show, we don't play.
Are you gonna have shows?
Nah, it's, man, you gonna come masquerade, come put it on. When the ball drop, put it on.
See, I'm interested in shows, okay, as you can see. Uh, not that night, but I'm just saying going forward, cuz I know you're.
She's very hip-hop driven.
Yeah, so we, I just wanna know.
My brother owns, my, my, my OG brother owns Views, View, not Views Downtown, Views, uh, man, I don't wanna be wrong. It's in, it's right up north, I'ma, I'ma say it to you later on, but he always has live shows. He has live bands in all the time, every, every single Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to revive the hip-hop culture of old, of the old days, you know what I'm saying? So that's, that's why I asked you that, but this has been really, really great, I really, really. Hope that people continue to follow you, um, because you have a lot to offer for everybody in the city of Atlanta.
Shout out to my opponents who locked up, we gonna free the prisons, man, we gonna fix this, we gonna fix the next generation, when people get out of jail, they need a job. So when people get out of jail, they need to walk into them city jobs, so shout out to my people that following me, that's following me, that's locked up. When you get out of jail, you gonna come home to a job, call me. When you get out of jail, you got a son or a brother, cousin getting out of jail, call me, we ain't tripping. You got, uh, when, I know Kaseem Reed said, if you got bills, late bills, you need help tax, I'ma call Kaseem Reed so he can still pay y'all bills too. So don't even sell your houses no more, you get what I'm saying, we gonna keep the housing, we gonna get people jobs and they get out of jail, that's what we working on.
Yeah, please keep y'all.
And I say that cuz somebody in jail just wrote something to me, I gotta say, shout out to the folks locked up, you get out, you get your job.
And that's important, man, cuz like, once again, ain't nobody out here doing nothing illegal unless they have to. Once again, you ain't never seen a man with a good job out here.
Men with the city jobs ain't doing that. A good city job, you ain't, you ain't, you ain't robbing nobody with a good city job. You know what I'm saying, especially if you just got out of prison on probation and parole, and you got that good city job. Your girlfriend treat, your wife treats you better, your girl, your mama treats you better.
That's something we don't talk about, it's, it's so many people that do come home and like, they, they get blackballed, you know what I'm saying, that, they can't find a good job just because they have. They made a mistake, like, you know what I'm saying, and it's kinda like, we gotta quit treating people like they're.
So the city of Atlanta is that place where you come home, and guess what we need, all this talk about our public services ain't working right, right? We gonna hire people into these public service departments, so the city of Atlanta hires felons and we gonna, we gonna employ folks. We gonna put together some programs, we need to work with pad, I said this before, it's police alternative and diversions, we, we ain't gotta lock everybody up. Man, let's get people some access, people commit some of these crimes cuz they broke. Man, Ben Bro, man, we broke, man, we need some, and so we gonna, we gonna fix that, in a way, anything broke can be fixed, that's Atlanta slang, y'all. That's a southern slang, I don't know if y'all, anything broke can be fixed, right? So we gonna fix a lot of broke things in the city of Atlanta.
And that's that.
That's that on that. So how can everybody support you, where can they follow you?
Follow me at Antonio Lewis ATL, also follow Mina on the ground.
Yes, where's Mina?
Mina is the person that sets up everything, man, cuz I, I be, they overcommitting me to stuff, I, I be saying yes to everything. So also follow Mina on the ground. She keeps me in line, she tell me to send everything.
Mina is wonderful.
I needed her, like, things that I needed in my.
Everybody needs Mina.
Or, or something like it. Cuz you can't have Mina, so get something like it.
I got Mina.
We blessed, we negotiated her contract yesterday. On a Saturday.
We gonna have to get her back on the show soon too.
I just love Mina. Like, anything she needs, people, feet, hands, I'm going.
Oh, she building, man, she's building. She's building, and y'all need to keep doing what y'all doing, cuz I appreciate this space that y'all created.
Thank you, you have an open invitation, any information you wanna get out there, or if you need us to deliver some information, just let us know, tag us, we'll post it.
I don't know if y'all prayers, but I'm a real prayer, not, I ask for prayers, my grandma died right before COVID happened, so anytime I go somewhere, I tell people, make sure y'all pray for me. I'm missing one, one person on ground praying, and so I ask for more prayers from everybody else, so. Keep them away from me, keep all of them away from us, cuz that's the only way we gonna win, cuz imagine how the devil working them. You get what I'm saying, so send me every prayer you can.
We have a true warrior, Lord, protect him, Holy Spirit, lead him and guide him, in Jesus's name, amen, I'm not even gonna wait, I'ma pray right now. We got a true warrior on the ground, y'all, please support this brother. Um, I, I, I know as soon as I leave here, I'm gonna be like, I should have asked him, I should have, but I think he got all the bases covered. I feel confident in what he's gonna do for this, for this district. Um, I need to find out what's going on where I just moved to, because I'm not really familiar with my political arena yet.
District Twelve. I'm telling you, come on home, man, come to.
Yeah, and you are gonna do great, and I want you to be the mayor one day.
Andre, I respect.
One day, Andre, look, Andre, look, you're gonna do a great job, and I wish you the best too, but look, you got, we got some great men. Leading the city of Atlanta.
We gonna grow, we gonna grow, and Atlanta first, Atlanta first. I can say that now, Atlanta first. Atlanta first, I can say that now.
And mean it.
Oh, fully, get out my favorite day.
For sure, man, we, 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 we so happy that you came on, man, you know, i- i- it's motivating to see personable. Like, you, you meet so many people, they, you know, they get into certain positions, they wa- walk a certain line, and you can't, you know. You speak to them, they don't say nothing back.
Right, now you got somebody that came here after he already won. So we know that, right.
Talk to you now, you got somebody that'll be there for you, you got somebody that's on Cleveland Avenue, like, you know what I'm saying, so.
Fully, you could be, I'ma actually open up a, a district office on Cleveland Avenue, so you should always be there. Access your city council person, we gonna bring the jobs to the people, I know that resources come to the city council person, right? So when you got some resources, you gonna have to get off that exit two forty-one, make that left-hand turn and drive to see me. So you gonna have to drive past those potential, all that opportunity. And I want you to use your mind as you ride past all that opportunity, so we can bring some real resources back to my community.
Oh yeah, I like the way that's saying.
Yeah, because everything is over there, everything is over there. So, we're gonna wrap it up, thank you for coming, congratulations again, um, with, your website too.
Atl.com, everything's Antonio Lewis ATL, we gonna keep it always simple, I was gonna change it, but they said nah, we gonna keep it how we going. We gonna stay us.
All right, and also follow us at CTD underscore ATL. Um, and we're gonna keep you posted on what's going on, y'all, we will see you next time, enjoy your holidays, um, and hit us up.